Hi, this is Alderman Hill. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yep.
Thank you.
Domingo at seven o'clock in the morning.
Okay, thank you very much. So we're ready to go, right Randy?
Yes, sir.
Okay. On June the twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty, the Governor of Illinois issued a statewide disaster declaration related to public health concerns. As head of this body, I've determined that an in-person meeting or a meeting otherwise conducted in accordance with the Open Meetings Act is neither practical nor prudent because of the disaster. This meeting will be conducted by internet teleconference without the physical presence of a quorum. Prior to the commencement of this meeting, all members of this body were verified and can be seen and hear one another. I further find that the physical presence of members of the public is not feasible at this meeting due to the disaster and more specifically, the practical difficulties associated with accommodating the public in an inaccessible hygienic location that allows for appropriate social distancing. Alternative arrangements have been made to allow the public to contemporaneously hear all discussion and roll call votes live on the city's official website, on Facebook, and via Zoom teleconference. Notice of these arrangements have been given in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. The public may address this body consistent with the rules previously adopted and recorded, and as adopted by mayoral order. We have Alderman Bill Farnwell, a member of this body, is physically present at our regular meeting location. All votes shall be conducted by roll call, and a verbatim record of this meeting shall be made and maintained in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. Mr. City Clerk, could you read the title for the agenda, please?
This is the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Blue Island, Illinois, held remotely on Tuesday, November twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty at seven PM. As promoted by Executive Order twenty-twenty oh-seven, signed by Illinois Governor J.B. Pritzker on March sixteenth, twenty-twenty, in response to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. To participate remotely, download the Zoom app or call three-one-two-six-two-six-six-seven-nine-nine. The City Council meeting webinar ID of eight-four-nine-one-six-eight-zero-seven-four-four-three with a password of one-two-four-one-four-four.
All right, I'm going to be calling this meeting to order with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God.
Under God.
And indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Could I have a roll call, Mr. City Clerk?
Sure. Mac. Mac absent. Carr.
Here.
Carr here. Zelman.
Here.
Zelman here. Clinker.
Here.
Clinker here. Stevo. Stevo. I see your emoji. Okay, Johnson.
Here.
Johnson here. Alexander.
Here.
Alexander here. Bellato.
Here.
Bellato here. Cosidas. Cosidas absent. Rita.
Here.
Rita here. Donahue. Donahue absent. Holly.
Here.
Holly here. Farnwell.
Here.
Farnwell here. Uh, Stevo.
What happened to Hill?
Oh, I'm sorry, Hill. I'm sorry, Johnny. Hill. Hill here. I'm sorry. Stevo. I see you there, Ellen. I'm going to mark you here. I saw you act. Move on that, so. Okay, one, two, three. We have eleven present, remember?
Okay.
Twelve, twelve, twelve. Eleven.
Twelve, all right. Thank you very much. Whenever you see that number, let me know, Mr. City Clerk.
There's an area code eight-seven-two number. I don't know if that's it.
You want to see? Let's find out who that is. Can we?
Sure. Who's calling from eight-seven-two? They're not answering.
Okay, we'll move on. We move on to presentation of general proceedings. I'll need a motion in a second to approve the City Council minutes for the date of November the tenth, twenty-twenty.
Auto motions.
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second, Farnwell.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Zelman.
Aye.
Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Stevo. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farnwell.
Aye.
Farnwell, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Stevo. Steve, I can't hear you. Ten ayes, Your Honor.
All right, thank you, what? Can you now read the next number five, please?
Sure. Public comment shall be by email only. Persons interested in making a public comment must email their public comment to ahoyzer@cityofblueisland.org by November twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty at six PM. Email public comments received will be read during the public comment portion of the meeting by City Clerk Randy Hoyer.
All right, before you go on, let me make this comment. This is in respect to Ravens and the Vault. So everybody's aware, decisions in respect to Ravens Place and the Vault were made to ensure compliance with the Governor's Executive Order, also known as COVID-nineteen restrictions, because of the importance for the health and the safety of the citizens of Blue Island as well, and I repeat, as well as the patrons of both establishments. My intention was to allow Mr. Thomas to resume his outdoor activities, but first, I wanted a commitment from him that he would strictly adhere to the then and now current guidelines per executive order by the Governor, which he failed to, which he basically ignored in the past. As a reminder, the license for the Vault and its stated business purpose is, and I repeat, is for a family restaurant entertainment center and not, and I repeat, not a nightclub. I want Mr. Thomas to abide by that as a restaurant and a family entertainment and not a nightclub. While Mr. Thomas has met with Alderman Bellato, the Fire Chief and Police Chief today, I want everybody to know that I was not informed of this meeting, nor was I invited to attend such meeting today. The outdoor venue was closed back in July because of a complete disregard for any of the Governor's imposed guidelines by his executive order. When the Vault held that event back in July, which made local media, Chicago Television, and media attention, I had received, and my office had received emails and messages, not only from our elected officials, the Aldermen, but concerned residents as well as other people in and out of the City of Blue Island. As liquor commissioner, it is my responsibility and authority to assure that establishments that sell liquor follow the law. Again, I want to repeat, there were notices, written notices, agreements, and demands by elected officials to do otherwise. Now, Mr. City Clerk, are there any public comments?
Uh, yes, there are.
Go ahead.
We have, we have three public comments. One is from Carol De Pace Green. It's together hashtag Blue Island Strong Distributed Free Face Mask Gloves, Hand Sanitizer, Turkeys, Food and Gift Cards, No Questions Asked. Um, and wishes to thank all of our extremely generous November donors, helpers, and volunteers. Sanji Brooks, Shannon and Marshall Bryant, Kimberly Byrne, Bryant, Keddie Crabs, Jennifer Hill, Kelly and Don Lorenzen and family, Angelo Green, Don Gross, Dexter Johnson Jr., Mason Johnson, Olivia Lopez, David Power, Ron Young, Blue Island Public Library, DDE High School Leo Club and Students and Advisors, Juanita Lopez, Amy Stevens, DDE High School, Colgate Toothbrushes and Toothpaste, Robbins Park District, The Brainstorming Warehouse, Blue Island Mayor Domingo Vargas, City Clerk Randy Hoyer, Alderman Johnny Hill, Alderman Dexter Johnson, Alderman Ellen Stevo. Our next Blue Island, our next Together Hashtag Blue Island Strong Face Mask Gloves, Hand Sanitizer and Food DDE High School Drive-Thru Event is December twelfth, twenty-twenty, from ten-thirty AM to twelve-thirty PM, or well supplies last. And there's a second one. Whenever, this is from Jason Rains, who lives on Walnut Street. Whenever a false narrative is woven to fit an agenda that then accepted as justification for inaction, the integrity of the entire Build's Department and the City of Blue Island is brought into question. After six weeks of calling and pleading with Ahmed H. Ike Sandino, he finally came to our residence only to discover what we were, what we have accurately depicted all along. We were without heat. The landlord Larry Coe is/was not providing heat at all, not inadequate heat, no heat. He actually refused to provide heat over and over again. Ahmed H. Ike Sandino was well-informed throughout the entire ordeal and refused to act until today. Anyone with a sworn duty to uphold the law and basic decency must provide that code of ethics for the entire constituency without prejudice. Each member of the society, municipality, and constituency has equal protection under the laws as afforded by the Fourteenth Amendment when there is an attempt to violate that city, that right. City officials are empowered to act. Please let that always be the case. Those that do not uphold that idea, those that do not believe in this cornerstone of justice, do a grave disservice to us all. This behavior enables Larry Coe, the Larry Coes of the world, to continue the assault the constituency of Blue Island during worldwide pandemic. Please take appropriate measures to ensure that our rights are protected. This is from Raymond Thomas from Ravens Place LLC. I wanted to thank Alderman Fred Bellato for keeping his word on arranging a meeting with the Fire Chief Dan Rita and Police Chief Arzib. The meeting was arranged so that we could discuss the opening of the Vault in Ravens Place consistent with current COVID protocols and while also take into consideration any other concerns. Unfortunately, I was advised by Chief Arzib that Mayor Vargas's order dating back to July sixteenth, twenty-twenty revoking my patio privileges remain in effect. Over four months ago, it was agreed that outdoor service was revoked until further notice. Apparently, Mayor Vargas ordered this, that this remain in effect despite the outcome of last week's City Council meeting. We have arranged for a tent that covers our patio, which is attached to our building and is on private property. While my attorneys attempted to resolve this with the city attorneys today, they did not receive a response. I am asking you to please reverse the mayor's standing order and allow me to open consistent with current COVID protocols. There is no basis for the mayor to continue to order the Kobe Police Department to shut me down. Kind regards, Raymond Thomas, Ravens Place LLC.
Anything else?
And then we do have a three-one-three area code.
All right, let me, let me make this announcement. Um, I want to take this time again, for the last couple of weeks, I've been mentioning about certain projects in conjunction with our Cook County Board, especially our President, President Tony Preckwinkle. Uh, we want to thank her and the board for their investment in not only in support of this administration, but also investing in our community, not only in the past seven years, but in the future, and they plan to do that in the very near future. In front of you, there's a resolution that you will be voting on regarding a pilot program to distribute face, cloth face coverings to the city's most in need population, and that's something that we've been working in conjunction with her office. And I want to take this time now to, and in honor, to introduce to you Cook County Board President Tony Preckwinkle.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and I'm really grateful for the opportunity to be with you this evening.
My pleasure.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, let me begin with our COVID-nineteen work because you, you alluded to it in your, in your remarks. First of all, I want to thank you. We work closely with all of our cities, towns, and villages, and we're grateful to be partners with you. Um, we were able to share resources because we know that Blue Island has been hit really hard by the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Uh, and so not only did we give you an allocation based on your population, but also uh, how heavily you were impacted by the COVID-nineteen pandemic. So uh, resources flowed into Blue Island based not simply on the number of people, but also the challenges that you faced in this extraordinary moment. Uh, we've shared masks because we think it's really important that everyone mask up. That's one of the three Ws. Wear a mask, watch your distance, and wash your hands. Um, and as the mayor said, uh, we are providing for free, uh, masks to communities so that they can share them with those individuals who need them and may not be able to afford them. I want you to know that we've got some real challenges going forward. Um, one of the things we did this week was put in place a program that will, will help folks who are facing eviction if they're renters, or mortgage foreclosure if they're homeowners. Uh, this is something the county did in two thousand and eight in the midst of another depression. Um, and right now, we look at, at what we think will be happening early next year and into the spring, and we put this, this mediation program and, and assistance program in place, as I said, to help both renters and homeowners. So that's something that, um, that the county is putting together right now and will be available to people as needed, uh, going forward. Today was the day in which our budget passed in the county. We had no new taxes, and I know that that's important to people in the Southland who struggle with property tax issues. So no new taxes. It's balanced budget, and it includes a hundred million dollars in equity investments. Money for criminal justice reform, violence prevention, anti-recidivism, restorative justice. Uh, money for our Department of, uh, our Bureau of Economic Development to support small businesses and to help the not-for-profits that assist the homeless and, and help those who are food insecure. Twenty million dollars to do contact tracing, again, in, in support of our pandemic work. The federal money runs out on December thirtieth, and we want to be sure that we can do this into the new year. So we're putting twenty million dollars of county resources into this. And lastly, um, thirty million dollars into a fair transit proposal that will reduce fares on the Rock Island and, um, metro, metro electric lines that serve the Southland, that serve the South suburbs. Um, so we do fares in the city. So we do fares in the city, and, and they will reduce fares in the suburbs as well. So I, I'm grateful to have, have a chance to talk to you this evening and kind of share what's going on.
Thank you. Your Honor, I want to thank on behalf of all the residents here in Blue Island, my staff at City Hall and everywhere, and also from the elected officials, that your commitment to our city is unbelievable. Again, thank you from the bottom of our heart. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome, and we, we've got a clinic, if I understand it, that, that, uh, is up and running this week.
That is correct.
Moved, moved from Oak Forest to Blue Island to a, a new site that we think will better serve the people of Cook County and surely the people of your community.
Yes, in fact, uh, Your Honor, I've also mentioned to the, uh, City Council that hopefully you'll be joining us on a groundbreaking for a, a piece of land, some demolition and remediation at one-nineteenth of Vincent's in the very, very near future.
I'd be happy to do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Honor. Thank you very much. Again, on, on behalf of all the residents of Blue Island, thank you for your assistance, and please be safe, you and your family. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and have a great Thanksgiving.
You too. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Moving on to number six, report of city officials. Uh, we have number one on the mayor's agenda. Regarding the second regularly scheduled City Council meeting will be held on December the fifteenth, twenty-twenty at seven PM. Mr. City Clerk, do we need a motion for that?
No, it's just an announcement. That's our regularly scheduled meeting for December. And there's five Tuesdays in December, so that's just, you know, five weeks before we see the next account payable.
Got it. Thank you. The next one is a Resolution twenty-twenty dash zero-four-seven, as that has been alluded previously. It's a resolution approving and authorizing a memorandum of understanding with the County of Cook concerning participation, and again, repeat, in a pilot program to distribute cloth face coverings to the city's most in need populations. So I'll need a motion in a second.
Johnson, make a motion.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Holly, we'll start.
Who made the second? Thank you very much. Any questions? If not, I'll need a roll call, please.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Zelman.
Aye.
Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Stevo.
Aye.
Stevo, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farnwell.
Aye.
Farnwell, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Eleven ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Uh, we move on to mayor's announcement. As you know, our community is part of the stay-at-home advisory issued for South suburban Cook County residents affected November the sixteenth for a period of at least thirty days. This advisory was issued in response to the rising COVID-nineteen infection rates across our region and our state. Under the Cook County Stay-at-Home Advisory, you are asked to refrain from any non-essential activities and stay home. If you must go out for essential activities such as work, to attend school, get tested for COVID-nineteen, get medical services, or to shop for groceries, you are asked to wear a mask consistently and correctly over your nose and mouth. Avoid contact, close contact with others, and maintain a distance of at least six feet from others who do not live with you. Wash your hands often with soap and warm water. Refrain from attending or hosting gatherings with people who do not live in your household. This includes recommendations to postpone holiday gatherings or host virtual celebrations to limit the spread of COVID-nineteen. Do not engage in any non-essential travel, including vacations or trips to visit relatives or friends. And finally, as possible, Cook County Department of Public Health is asking on employers in suburban Cook County to reestablish telework protocols for staff who are able to work from home. Again, for more information on this advisory, you can visit blueisland.org. I want to thank you and have a safe and happy Thanksgiving. Let me move on. Uh, to, for some of the Alderman elected officials and the residents, ComEd is in our city. They're replacing LED lights. Uh, I've seen them specifically on the northeast quadrant. As I speak, they're on Vincent's from one-hundred-and-nineteenth, replacing all, all those, uh, city lights, well, their lights, on wooden poles from one-hundred-and-nineteenth all the way heading south to one-hundred-and-twenty-seventh, and they're working throughout the city. Additionally, I want to repeat, as I had mentioned before, but we didn't have an exact date, uh, railroad crossing repairs have started as of yesterday on the, uh, intersections or railroad crossings at one-hundred-and-twenty-third Street, one-hundred-and-nineteenth Street, and Union Street. Uh, they'll be working on that for the next couple of days. Regarding the greenery on, on, on Western Avenue, I want to thank Val Quixote and all the group of volunteers that came out on Sunday. Uh, the street looks fabulous. It's in the season. Again, to all those volunteers who did that and who volunteered and cleaned up our city throughout the city. And again, as, uh, Miss De Pace Green mentioned, I want to thank everybody who attended for Blue Island Strong. It shows a commitment to our city and caring that those loving people in our city. I want to repeat, especially for the Aldmen in this ward, uh, Division Street, probably this coming spring, will be renovated, redone, from Vermont Street to the, uh, Division Street Bridge, and then starting back up again from the Division Street Bridge to Broadway. That was through, funding through the, um, Southwest Conference of Mayors, as well as, uh, the two-way on Western Avenue project. It's on a contingency plan, uh, regarding that, again, money allocated from the Southwest Conference of Mayors. And I want you, if you haven't done this, especially now that the weather's starting to turn cold, but if you get a chance in the next couple of days, when the, the weather's going to be warm, especially this weekend, take a walk right on the Cal Sac Trail. It's complete. The Blue Island section has been completed. And as I mentioned before, and I hinted before, one-hundred-and-nineteenth of Vincent's, we're trying to set a date with, uh, the, Her Honor, uh, Tony Preckwinkle, to join us on the groundbreaking and demolition and remediation of one-hundred-and-nineteenth and Vincent's location. As I mentioned before, um, we're also in the process, if you haven't seen it already, uh, they started putting in the new garbage, uh, receptacles on Western Avenue, part of the streetscape. Uh, that has been planned out. It's just a matter of getting additional funding, but that plan, and it's available to be reviewed at City Hall at any time. I want to welcome again to the new location, Family Dollar, at the corner of Vermont and Western. Uh, we know they're going to do well. They've been good neighbors. And other businesses that have opened up also within the last couple of weeks in Blue Island. And we can't stress enough, especially this weekend, starting the Holiday Shopping Center, it's to shop local, shop Blue Island as best as you can before you go out and search out other communities. I want to thank and wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, on behalf of my family, to yours, and from the family, our Blue Island city staff family, to you, to all the elected officials, to the residents. Uh, and let's, let's consider and keep in mind and help if we can, as best as we can, given this pandemic, especially because of the pandemic, uh, the people in need. Whether they're your neighbors, whether they're people you don't know, people that you see on the street, our veterans, et cetera. And pray, especially for the people who are in the hospital and who lost a loved one or who loved ones are in the hospital right now with that. There's some good news coming out in the near future, as soon as I get it, regarding, uh, the former Metro South Hospital. Uh, again, the state has control of that hospital, from my understanding, until April, but there is good news in the horizon regarding the facility, uh, and I will get you that information as quickly as I can. Um, let me see. And that, I think, is all I have. Uh, Mr. City Clerk, any, any bids?
Yes, Your Honor, there is one bid. I need a motion to approve LED street lighting upgrade award recommendation to H&amp;H Electric in the amount of one-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
I need a motion.
Alderman Carr, make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Alderman Hill, second.
Thank you very much, Alderman. Any questions? If not, I need a roll call.
Any question?
Yeah, question. Johnson.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
How many people bided for this contract?
That would probably have to ask the finance.
Eric.
Hey, this, this is Eric Alvarez here. Alderman Johnson, we had four contractors bid on this project.
Thank you.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Uh, no. Go ahead. Anybody else? If not, I need a roll call.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Zelman.
Aye.
Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Stevo.
Aye.
Stevo, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato. Bellato, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Eleven ayes, your honor.
Thank you very much. Uh, anything else?
Um, I don't have anything.
Okay. Uh, we'll move on to the city treasurer's business. Well, I'll need a motion for approval of inter-fund transfers from unrestricted and restricted accounts. I need a motion and I'll need a second.
Holly, motion by Holly. Second by Alexander.
Okay. Uh, if there's no questions, I'll need a roll call.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Zelman.
Aye.
Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Stevo.
No.
Stevo, no. Johnson.
No.
Johnson, no. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Rita. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye.
Sorry.
That's right. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Aaron Wald.
Aye.
Aaron Wald, aye. Nine ayes and two noes, your honor.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry. You know, Johnny, what happened was I had, this is the sheet from last, last meeting, and you're at the top. Hill.
You sound like you're kind of purposely forgetting me.
No, you're, you're. I, that's what I was saying, Johnny. You're, I had to start on the, one line down so that we can keep rotating the vote. I'm sorry. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Nine ayes and two, two noes, your honor.
Thank you. Next is the cash collections, uh, receipt report, and then the treasurer's announcements, none. Um, city attorney.
Yes, Mayor, if I can just take a few moments.
Sure, go ahead.
I wanted to put some context into the underlying basis for the prosecution that we engaged in with respect to the business license and liquor license violations uh committed by Ravens Place. And the reason I wanted to do that is, I know I wasn't at the meeting on the eighteenth of September when the city council voted to reverse your decision on the business license, but I, I want, I think it's important for the council to understand how this came about. So I'm going to read a real brief email that I received along with yourself and Clerk Hoiser and the police chief and her assistant, Sergeant Sepacy, uh, along with certain of the aldermen on the city council, Alderman Bellato, Clinker, and Stevo. And this I received at twelve oh four in the morning on September twentieth, and it's, I'm going to read it. It's just pretty quick. Mayor Vargas, what is happening at the Ravens Place tonight is completely unacceptable. Multiple fights on Western Avenue, cars driving the wrong way on Western, drinking in the street and on the sidewalks. In a matter of ten minutes, I witnessed two fights, all while multiple Blue Island police were present. They did a great job of de-escalating the situation, but this is ten thousand percent out of control. Other businesses on Western are threatening to move because they do not feel safe with what is happening. I don't feel safe with what is happening. Again, I want to comment, and I think he meant commend, our police for doing such a great job, but this is getting very dangerous. Please get this under control because it is becoming scary and unsafe for all. Thank you, Alderman Kevin Donahue. As I said earlier, I received this at shortly after midnight in the morning of September twentieth. Now, when, after we received it, I, I talked with my associate, Leslie Kennedy. I spoke with yourself, and we decided that rather than just accept it on face value, we would, one, ask the alderman to please formalize his concerns in a written complaint, and we also engaged in an investigation by interviewing four of the police officers who were involved, interviewing uh the police chief to learn what she had, she knew, and then we, as I said, we also engaged in preparation of some requests so that we can gain information from the licensee. The licensee being Ravens Place in this particular instance. Now, we wanted to make sure that this wasn't hyperbole from Alderman Donahue, and so we followed up again, and he followed up with what we asked him, and he sent us what he titled a complaint. And that was four days later on September twenty-third, and I'll read this as well because I think it's important to understand that we weren't generating this particular investigation. We were trying to follow what we were told, and this is what Alderman Donahue spoke to us about. Beginning Saturday, September nineteenth, there were large crowds, obnoxious people, cars driving down Western Avenue the wrong way, public drinking and fighting. All of these people were customers or trying to gain entry into Ravens slash the vault. Around midnight, myself and the owner of one thirty-eleven Western Avenue, and that's the Double Play, noticed a large group of people assembled outside, so we went to see what was going on. As we went outside, five police cars arrived down the street at Ravens. Moments later, a fight broke out between two sets of women in front of the Diabetic Shoe Store on Western. The police were able to bring order and dispel the group. While this was going on, somebody was parked in a, in a, in parking that is leased to one thirty-eleven Western for use by his customers. The person parked was not a customer and was asked multiple times to move his vehicle or he would be towed. The person became agitated and started to act in an aggressive way. The police were still nearby and made the person move his car. Across from one thirty-eleven, there were fifteen to twenty people, around three cars, all drinking in the street, smoking marijuana, and being very loud. While we were outside, we noticed three cars drive the wrong way down Western Avenue. This was also happening frequently while we were inside. This has been going on all summer, and every week it seems to get more and more out of hand, or it seems to get more out of hand. I feel unsafe as did others that were around. And I'm reading that to you because I didn't write this, and my associate, Leslie Kennedy, didn't write this, but we did investigate this, and we did talk to the police, and we did learn from the police that there was a, that most of the information in this particular letter was one hundred percent accurate. To Alderman Donahue's credit, he did have a great recollection of what he observed. We also interviewed the owner of the Double Play, who testified at the hearing. We also had a police officer testify at a hearing. We didn't do this because we were focusing our efforts on this particular business or the owners of these particular businesses. We did this because we were presented with a very, very viable and what we believe to be factual complaint. I just want that clearly understood. And I also want it understood that when we prosecuted this case, we prosecuted it based upon the facts that we had available to us. We did not look at the race of the owner of the property. We looked at the facts that we were told. The policeman verified that, yes, there were five officers that attended to that particular ruckus, and we also did some significant background investigation to determine the advertising that was being conducted by the operators of the Ravens Place and, and then, and the vault. We determined certain factors that we presented also to the Illinois Liquor Control Commission concerning the sale of alcohol and liquor by the operators of the Ravens Place and the vault. I just want it perfectly clear. This was initiated by one of your fellow aldermen. We followed up as we're supposed to follow up. We interviewed the police, the people that were there, and determined the facts based upon what we were told. And I just want to get that on the record right now so that it's clear. And with respect to any apology that may have been extended to Mr. Thomas or the operators of the vault and Ravens Place, it should be understood it is not an apology by the city of Blue Island, nor is it an apology by the lawyers that represented the city of Blue Island in this particular matter for anything that we did. With that, I'll end my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, committee.
Mayor Vargas. Mayor Vargas, uh, before I get into community development, um, just want to make a couple of things clear, and I, out of no disrespect to the attorney and, and the mayor that have almost talked now for an hour primarily over Ravens Place and the vault, I don't think anything was said that night against law firm this or law firm that. It was basically hearing the facts from attorneys and Donahue, if my recollection's off, was not part of the alderman that overturned the decision. So I don't know where this is coming from, Attorney V, Attorney Horvath, but I just want to state clear, I don't know where this is coming from, where you have to restate these things. We listened to the cases and we overruled, and Donahue was not part of the overruling majority. Secondly, um, Mayor, if on the special city council meeting, um, it was a rough consensus that if there was any concerns, I invited Ray Thomas to come to my next community development. Ray Thomas called me up. I said, "That's fine. I'm not sure about COVID stuff or any of that stuff. I, I'm going to invite the chiefs there, and they can tell you the concerns that we had." The meeting was only about twenty minutes, and it came up during the, the conversation that he didn't know where he stood, and I, I promptly, which I think he said, told him to contact our city attorneys and the mayor because you are the liquor commissioner. So again, it was a twenty-minute meeting to talk about aldermanic community development concerns that was discussed at our special city council meeting, and it was no more than that. So I came there with the two chiefs and I left with the two chiefs, so I'm not sure where those strong comments are coming from about not being invited, and that was the impression from the city council meeting that community development, he was going to come to the next community development meeting. It's in the video, it's in the minute, so it was already predetermined that we were going to have a meeting. And there was nothing that came out of it other than the concerns from the fire department and the police department and my aldermanic concerns. So my statements on both scenarios, and, and you're still a liquor commissioner, you still have the say on liquor licenses, and I've actually said those exact words at the meeting. So just making it clear, uh, Mayor and Attorney, where I came from, or I'm, what I'm thinking of those thoughts that were just put out there.
All right, thank you very much. Uh.
Alderman Bellato, I appreciate your comments, but I just wanted it to be made perfectly clear that it was Alderman Donahue, who, as I understand, abstained instead of voting at all, who initiated this particular circumstance, and when, when an alderman such as yourself or Alderman Donahue or any of the other twelve aldermen on the city council communicate with us, we don't just ignore it, at least I don't, and we took action based upon it, and we investigated it. And I just want it made perfectly clear that that's what we did so that there's no misunderstanding. We would do the same thing again. This wasn't the first alderman that made such a complaint. I hope it's the last alderman that makes such a complaint, but I wanted it very clear that that's why we acted. We did not act on our own or of our own initiative with respect to this particular licensee.
All right, thank you. Let's move on to community development committee. Any report?
No report, Your Mayor. Um, we're going to have next meeting the second Wednesday of December. Moving to finance, I'm, I'm assuming I'll do the report.
Yeah, yeah, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Let's see here. All right, under finance, we have a motion for approval of payroll for November thirteenth, twenty twenty for the amount of three hundred and seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars and eighty-five cents.
You got a motion? Do you have a second?
Well, second, Alderman Carr.
Thank you very much. If no questions, I'll need a roll call.
Carr. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Zelman.
Aye.
Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Stevo.
Aye.
Stevo, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Eleven ayes, your honor.
Thank you very much.
All right, we have a motion for approval of accounts payable for November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty, amount of three hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and three cents.
You got a motion? You got a second?
Alderman Hill, second.
All right, thank you. If no questions, I'll need a roll call, please.
I have a question, Alderman Stevo.
Go ahead.
Yes, uh, Eric Alvarez, on the Robinson Engineering portion of the accounts payable, there's fifty some line items. Is this work completed?
Alderman Stevo, each, each of the projects is, um, so each one of those line items in the invoice is a separate project? And, um, are they, they're all in different stages of completion? Um, did you have a question about a specific project?
Uh, no, I just want to know if they were completed or not, if the work is, has been completed.
Okay, so the answer to that, Alderman Stevo, is definitely not, uh, those projects are all in various stages of completion, um, all the way from like very, very preliminary design um, to construction, engineering, um.
So currently, you're working on around fifty projects for the city?
Right, well, again, those are all in various stages and, um, yes, so us Robinson Engineering are working on a significant amount of projects for the city, yes. I haven't counted them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. If nobody else, I need, we got a motion second. I need a roll call, please.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Zelman.
Aye.
Zelman, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Stevo.
Aye.
Stevo, aye. Johnson.
No.
Johnson, no. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
No, aye. Ten ayes and one no, your honor.
Thank you very much.
All right, the final one we have is resolution twenty twenty dash zero four six, resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement with Wormer, Rogers, Doran, and Rosen LLC for financial consultant services for the city of Blue Island. And this expires, because I already asked this question next month, so it's a resolution basically for the, for twenty.
All right, uh, you got a motion? Do we, have a second?
Second.
All right, uh, do we have any questions? If not, I'll need a roll call.
I have a question, Alderman Stevo.
Go ahead.
Can, uh, we find out, how much have we paid so far this year to this company?
We can probably find that out for you and send it to all of you.
Well, is there, uh, is there a limit on how much we're going to, uh, how much they're going to charge us? Is there a maximum on what they will charge us?
Yes, there was a contract that we entered into. I don't, I don't know the amount, I don't remember the amount though, from last year, I thought.
This is the contract for this year. I think it's hourly, hourly rate. I do not have the answer for that, and I have no issue if this wants to be tabled either, but because it's next year, we've already gone through the entire fiscal year, but it's an hourly rate, and I know it has not exceeded the amount in the budget because it didn't come to finance that we exceeded the amount.
And how much was budgeted?
That's all I can do to answer the question, Alderman Stevo. It hasn't exceeded the amount. I do not know the exact amount, though.
Do you happen to know how much was budgeted for this company?
I do not. I don't have that numbers in front of me.
But we know they have done the work.
We do know they have done the work. He was on our finance committee at the last meeting and.
Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Nine ayes and two noes, your honor.
Thank you very much.
Anything else, Alderman? That's it, mayor.
Thank you very much. Uh, Public Health and Safety Committee.
Yeah, um, we met last Tuesday, um, November, whatever that was. Um, I don't have the report, I do have the report from the October meeting. So, uh, October, the meeting was held October 2020 on Zoom, uh, it's called ordered 6:02, present were Alderman Farrenwald, Clinker Hall, I'm sorry, Hill, Carr, and Stevo, along with Chief Arzab and Chief Rita, absent were Alderman Johnson and Cazares. Uh, approval of minutes, a motion was made by Alderman Carr, seconded by Hill to approve the minutes from the September 2020, uh, meeting, all roll, a roll call vote was taken to approve, all in favor, motion carried. Uh, committee received an email from Carol de Pace Green regarding rollback of water rate increase, the poor performance of elected officials and insupportive, insufficient reporting for police, fire, public works stating that these reports needed meaning, more meaningful context. Under Fire Department Business, Chief Rita presented the September numbers and report, there were 259 EMS responses, 138 fire, 18 auto aid responses and one mutual aid. Medical reimbursement collected $60,462.64 for the month. Year-to-date total $360,000.039.23. Fire recovery collected $1,760.67. Year-to-date total $19,721.68. Uh, no false alarm fees collected for the month, year-to-date totals at 700. Under calls of interest, the chief reported a couple of fires, we had one in Blue Island, a garage fire on September 5th, uh, down 123rd and Vincennes, and we assisted on three fires in, uh, other towns, Marina Park on the 14th, Calumet Park on the 27th, and Riverdale on the 30th, those are all structured fires. Chief Rita reported that he's continued with the COVID-19 task force in informing elected officials regularly, uh, the department purchased gear for four members and they have two more sets ordered. The truck was still out of service, the ambulance is back in service. Under fire prevention, two inspections and eight re-inspections were completed. Chief presented his monthly training reports, which showed 555.5 total hours for the month. He reported overtime costs of $7,283.73 for the month, 117G hours for the month. Uh, COVID-19 preparation and response were ongoing within the department. Uh, the chief participated in a tabletop exercise at the Metro South Alternate Care Facility. Training officer Matt Suckus is enrolled in the training program manager class, John Duffy is the new EMS coordinator, and the chief has discussed the ALS upgrade with Kim Stotts from Ingles. Um, under old business, under the ALS upgrade, uh, chief went in and started discussing the ALS upgrade, he informed the committee, he had a labor management meeting regarding the upgrade. At that time, he had one applicant for permanent, excuse me, paramedic schooling, currently and was working on getting two more from the membership. Ingles was setting aside three spots in the class for Blue Island. The chief was working on getting equipment ordered before the first of the year, year using CARES funding. Uh, under vehicle replacement, chief is pursuing and looking at options for apparatus replacement. Uh, there was no new business. Under Police Department Business, Chief Arzab reported probationary officer Albert Rizik is still at the Macon County Training Facility, is due to graduate at the end of December. Probationary Officer Julio Puma graduated from the academy on October 2nd and resigned from the department on October 9th to accept employment at another agency. Current full-time staffing was at 33. Sergeant Sepulvede also attended the tabletop exercise at the Ultimate Care Facility. Uh, various revenue streams for the police department collected $72,922.84 for the month. There were 2,708 incidents, seven firearms were recovered, two EBSO deployments for the month, 80 hours of training in the police department. Chief reported a overtime cost of $18,283.20, of which $4,006.82 was reimbursable. Under calls of interest, she reported on September 4th, there was an aggravated robbery at the Metro PCS 12962 Ashland. There's also an aggravated discharge of a firearm at the Metro PCS 12962 Ashland. On September 6th, there was a missing endangered person in the 127 block of Winchester. September 6th, reckless discharge of a firearm, 1900 block of Vermont. Uh, September 18th, aggravated discharge of a firearm, 12400 block of Fairview, and September 20th, aggravated discharge of a firearm on 36th and Western. Under miscellaneous, the chief reported the park at York and Western has been turned back over to the owner who bought the hospital by AIMA. She has contacted Dan McNulty and will make a follow-up inquiry as to the plans for the gazebo and the concerns of the homeless people that are currently on the property. Alderman Clinker asked if there was any reimbursement to the city for the officer who passed the academy and then resigned. Chief said there is none. Alderman Clinker suggested putting something in the next union contract regarding this type of reimbursement. The city did recover his uniform allowance money. Um, Alderman Farrenwald suggested we need to figure out who keep new recruits who often leave for other departments for more pay. Alderman Farrenwald asked if the recent shootings were related, Chief Arzab stated the majority of the incidents just happened here, there are people from other cities passing through. Alderman Clinker asked about the chief's body camera research and suggested body cameras be included in next year's appropriations, chief is actively working and plans on presenting options during next year's appropriations. Uh, the clerical totals, totals, sworn police totals, monthly patrol totals, and incident reports were also included in her report. Uh, no, no old business, under new business, uh, chief requested a motion to approve the sale, salvage, disposal as junk of surplus vehicles. Chief would also like this sent to the municipal service committee for their approval as well. Um, after a discussion, a motion was made by Alderman Farrenwald, seconded by Alderman Hill to approve sale, salvage, or disposal of junk surplus vehicles and forward to the Finance and Municipal Services Committee for their approval as well. Roll call vote was held, all voted in favor, motion carried. We were already taking care of that, I think. Um, under Alderman concerns, Alderman Stevo asked about the enforcement of the littering ordinance. Chief Arzab suggested issuing local ordinance tickets or through state statute. He suggested doing something on a local level. Alderman Hill asked about the number of no littering signs posted throughout the city. Chief did not have an answer for that. Alderman Stevo had a bad connection, but asked if something could be done sooner rather than later. Um, Alderman Stevo asked about the fire sprinkler ordinance, uh, he was having a real hard time on the connection, so, uh, the city clerk jumped in to explain, I think, what he was looking at. So the clerk Hoiser explained that the water ordinance has a minimum usage charge based on the meter size. He explained there are 48 sprinkler systems in the city, of that 11 are being charged a minimum of 50,000 gallons per month. He explained the minimum charge is to maintain our water system throughout the city. The 48 systems generate $11,000 monthly for the water department. Alderman Farrenwald said this should be addressed to Municipal Services Committee regarding water billing. Alderman Clinker will forward this issue to Municipal Services Judiciary and Finance Chairpeople. Alderman Hill asked for signs for littering and overnight parking to be posted to the city, the city clerk believes the overnight parking signs are being handled through the judiciary committee. Alderman Farrenwald reported Xfinity Service Interruptions and stated it was affecting public safety and is something we need to address. A motion was made to adjourn at 6:43 by Alderman Hill, seconded by Alderman Carr, roll call vote was held. Alderman Hill, Carr, Farrenwald, and Clinker voted aye. Alderman Stevo is not available due to his poor internet connection. The motion carried. Our next meeting then was scheduled for November 17th, that's one I mentioned that we had last week. So our next men, meeting is December 15th, 2020 on Zoom at 6:00 PM. And that's it.
Thank you very much. Uh, Municipal Services Committee?
Aye, yes, your honor. These are the meeting, uh, the minutes for the meeting of November the 10th. Present were Jim Postrow, Eric Alvarez, Bob Jackson, Ted Ruthenberg, Alderman Meck, Alderman Farrenwald, Alderman Stevo, Alderman Rita, and Alderman Carr. Absent was Betty Harmeyer. Uh, also present was Randy Hoiser, the meeting was called to order at 6:05 PM. There was a public comment sent in by Carol de Pace Green, the veracity of the comment was called into question by Alderman Carr. Under Public Works, Jim Postrow gave his report for the month of October. Alderman Meck mentioned that many utility poles are leaning. Mr. Postrow replied that the poles are owned by ComEd and that addresses of the utility poles could be reported to Public Works and they in turn would report the poles to ComEd. Alderman Carr introduced the surplus vehicle ordinance, a request by Chief Arzab and Mr. Postrow to dispose of old municipal vehicles. Alderman Farrenwald made a motion, Alderman Rita asked if there would be any expense to the city and then seconded the motion. Alderman Stevo asked how the sale would be handled, clerk Hoiser responded that last time many companies were contacted and only two or three responses were received. Vote was taken, all in favor, motion carried. The handicap parking ordinance for 2545 West 123rd Street was introduced, there was a motion by Alderman Meck, seconded by Alderman Farrenwald, both taken, all in favor, motion carried. There was an agenda item for a parking lot update by Kimberly Byrne as requested by Alderman Farrenwald and Alderman Stevo. Kimberly Byrne had contacted the chair and responded that there was not anything to report at this time. Under the Water Department, Betty Harmeyer sent the water report in for the aldermen to review. Their current delinquent balance is $41,734.21. Under the John D. Rita Recreation Center, Bob Jackson sent the Rec Center report in for the aldermen to review. On October 30th, 2020, the Blue Island Girl Scout Troop 65168 held a small contact list award ceremony in the gymnasium. On December 10th, 2020, from 8:00 AM until the food is gone, the John D. Rita Rec Center along with United Way of South Suburban Cooks and Metropolitan Family Services will be giving away holiday food boxes. The walking club, I don't know if this is true now under the new restrictions, but at the time, the walking club was available Monday through Friday from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM for anyone who would like to start the day off with some exercise. There was no fit mask or face covering as required. Under Golf Course Business, due to a power outage, Ted Ruthenberg was not able to stay connected to the meeting. And then under Robinson Engineering, Eric Alvarez gave an update on ongoing projects. Edison and Francisco Streets have been completed. The LED street lighting project was discussed in finance. Progress is being made on the model for the fifth ward for the bypass pipe to alleviate flooding. The ITEP grant application was submitted and the CDBG should inform the city by December regarding the grant for flood release for 100, flood relief for 119th Place. Alderman Rita asked if these were all old projects and were they reviewed by Jim Postrow and approved by Municipal Services. She also asked about the public hearing for Irving being turned into a one-way street. Mr. Alvarez said that no one attended the public hearing. The next step would be to submit the plans, but he said that Alderman could always make comments regarding the project. Alderman Rita asked if the grant could still be received if the road were not turned into a one-way street and would there be another public hearing? Mr. Alvarez said that they could hold another public hearing. Alderman Rita asked how much the to-date bill to Blue Island from Robinson Engineering was. Mr. Alvarez said he did not know the exact amount, but that several invoices had been placed during the initial COVID-19 shutdown. Alderman Farrenwald said that the amount was $154,861.9. Mr. Alvarez said that the majority of that money would come from the TIPS districts. Alderman Stevo asked why the aldermen were not notified of the public hearing regarding Irving being changed to one-way. Mr. Alvarez said that the notices were run in the newspapers as required and he had not had time to publish the minutes. Alderman Stevo called for another public hearing. Alderman Carr asked who originated the Irving Avenue project, it was the Active Trans Committee. Alderman Farrenwald said that this is an important public safety issue. Alderman Rita suggested that another solution could be found. Mr. Alvarez stated that there is not room for two-way street and sidewalks. Alderman Stevo suggested that perhaps the rail lines could be relocated. Alderman Rita suggested that the railroad would pay for it. Alderman Farrenwald said that the railroad would not pay for it. Alderman Carr suggested that we should not spend further projects for this fiscal year. Mr. Alvarez said that 119th Place Bio-Swale Project Engineering Survey is complete, the topographical survey is complete, and the drilling is complete. The MWRD is finishing the details of the intergovernmental agreement. Alderman Stevo asked about the feasibility of the Joe Werner plan for the fifth ward flooding. Mr. Alvarez said that progress is being made on the model for the fifth ward for the bypass pipe to alleviate flooding, but emphasized that any plan will not be 100% effective. Also, there is no feed to the city for this modeling project. Alderman Farrenwald asked about the status of the Collins Street CBB project. Mr. Alvarez said this project will be slated for 2021. Under Alderman, Alderman's concern, Alderman Stevo asked what was the quickest way to get a ComEd street light installed? Mr. Postrow said that people need time to adjust to LED lights and additional poles are probably not necessary. Alderman Stevo said that there's a large gap in the lighting in the area that he was talking about. There was a motion to adjourn by Alderman Rita, seconded by Alderman Meck. Roll call vote was taken, all in favor, motion carried, meeting ended at 6:50. Our next regular meeting will be December the 8th at 6:00 PM.
Thank you very much. Anything else?
No, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, Judiciary Committee?
Good evening, everybody. I have minutes from, um, our meeting from, I'm sorry, I have two sets of minutes to read, uh, from September 15th and then on October 20th, that meeting was canceled. And then I have, uh, minutes from, um, last Tuesday, November 17th. So the September 15th minutes, uh, was held Tuesday, September 15th at 7:12 PM in Blue Island with a Zoom meeting. Uh, roll call taken to the committee, Alderman Rand, Cantello Zelman, Alderman Johnny Ringo Hill, Alderman Tom Holly, present, and Alderman Kevin Donahue, absent. Also in attendance, clerk Randy Hauser's moderator, and Alderman Alan Stevo. Public comment. There, there was no public comment. Uh, amend overnight parking ordinance. Alderman Johnny Hill began with suggestions on how to get the word out to new, to new residents about this ordinance. It was decided that the city clerk's office would be responsible for sending info in the water bill, sending it with the yearly city sticker renewal form and handing out flyers in the clerk's office to, to new residents when they come in, um, to pay their water bill and, uh, public announcement should be on BITV. Since there are questions regarding additional amendments by Chief Arzab, the ordinance was tabled. Motion by Cantello Zelman, seconded by Alderman Hill, uh, Hill, Holly, Cantello Zelman voting yes, all in favor, motion carried. Draft the Uptown.
Nancy, you're muted.
Have I been muted the whole time?
No, just now.
Good. What was the last thing that you heard about the draft of the Uptown Residential Parking Ordinance?
That's where it went, that's why.
Great. Okay, uh, discussion, Alderman Stevo added Gregory from Prairie to Union on the east side of the street, motion to adopt with proposed changes made by Alderman Cantello Zelman, second by Alderman Hill, Alderman Holly, Hill, Cantello Zelman voting yes, all in favor, motion carried. Damage claims, property damage claims 2020, 2029 in the amount of $998.59. Motion to authorize payment made by Alderman Holly, second by Alderman Cantello Zelman, Alderman Holly, Hill, Cantello Zelman voting yes, all in favor, motion carried. Property damage claim 2020-4618 in the amount of $207. After many questions for the city attorney, the claim was tabled by Cantello Zelman, second by Hill, uh, roll call, Alderman Hill, Holly, Cantello Zelman voting yes, all in favor, motion tabled. Adjournment at 8:00 PM, uh, with a roll call taken. Hill, Cantello Zelman, Holly, uh, voting yes, all in favor, motion carried. Adjourn and, uh, minutes for November 17th was a Zoom meeting which was held Tuesday, November 17th at 7:14 PM. Roll call taken of the committee with Alderman Rand, Cantello Zelman, Alderman Johnny Ringo Hill, Alderman Tom Holly, Alderman Kevin Donahue, present, all in attendance, in attendance, clerk Randy Hoiser as moderator, and Alderman Alan Stevo. from Prairie to Union on the east side of the street, motion to adopt with proposed changes made by Alderman Cantello Zilman, second by Alderman Hill, Alderman Holly, Hill, Cantello Zilman voting yes, all in favor, motion carried. Damage claims. Property damage claims twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-nine in the amount of nine ninety-eight fifty-nine. Motion to authorize payment made by Alderman Holly, second by Alderman Cantello Zilman, Alderman Holly, Hill, Cantello Zilman voting yes, all in favor, motion carried. Property damage claim twenty-twenty dash forty-six eighteen in the amount of two hundred and seven dollars. After many questions for the city attorney, the claim was tabled by Cantello Zilman, second by Hill. Roll call, Alderman Hill, Holly, Cantello Zilman voting yes, all in favor, motion tabled. Adjournment at eight PM with a roll call taken. Hill, Cantello, Zilman, Holly voting yes, all in favor, motion carried to adjourn. And minutes for November seventeen was a Zoom meeting which was held Tuesday, November seventeenth at seven fourteen PM. Roll call taken of the committee with Alderman Rand, Cantello Zilman, Alderman Johnny Ringo Hill, Alderman Tom Holly, Alderman Kevin Donahue present, all in attendance. In attendance, Clerk Randy Hauser as moderator and Alderman Allen Stevo. Public comment. Kevin Brown sent in an email. Kevin Brown requested an all-way stop on New and Maple due to accidental vehicular death. Alderman Cantello Zilman had a Blue Island bar owner on the phone who chose to be anonymous asking why his bar is closed because he is following the COVID recommendations and now the bars are not. Amend overnight parking ordinance. It was tabled on September twenty-twenty. Alderman Johnny Hill reiterated the importance of getting the info out to the new residents regarding overnight parking. Discussion of additional amendments by Chief Arzab. Agreed amendments. Section one, vehicle must be registered with the Illinois Secretary of State with a Blue Island address, display a Blue Island vehicle permanent visitor overnight permit. Part D, residents who have a vehicle leased or owned by the residence employer, which is assigned to the resident and has been issued a permanent visitor permit. Add or permanent visitor permit in paragraph two. Add paragraph three. Any resident desiring a permanent visitor permit shall file an application for such purpose with the city clerk. The application shall submit name and current address, name of employer, current mailing address of the employer, and a description of the vehicle. All applications shall be signed by the resident and owner or a duly authorized agent or employer. Upon payment of a fifty-dollar fee, the mayor shall issue or cause to be issued a permanent visitor permit which shall be attested by the city clerk authorizing the overnight parking of such vehicle. Delete paragraph four under section two, add each submitted request is valid for one vehicle for a single calendar date. Exceptions may be requested for the consecutive nights. Person requesting permission to park overnight on consecutive nights shall provide the police department with the calendar dates for the first and last date for the requested exception. Each single date within the consecutive night request counts as one pass, not to exceed seven for that calendar month. Any person requesting permission to park vehicles overnight may submit the request online at www.broadlinepss.com/BlueIsland or by calling seven oh eight three eight five one three one three. Motion to adopt the proposed amendments by Donahue, second by Hill, Alderman Hill, Holly, Cantello Zilman voting yes, all in favor, motion carried. Damage claims were tabled. The property damage claim tabled on September fifteenth, twenty-twenty forty-six eighteen in the amount of two hundred and seven dollars. Discussion. Motion to authorize payment denied by Donahue, second by Cantello Zilman, Alderman Hill, Holly, Cantello Zilman, Donahue voting yes, the chair voting no, motion carried to deny payment. Discussion. Consensus taken of Alderman Holly, Hill, Cantello Zilman, and Donahue voting yes to correct the clarification purposes of Uptown Residential Parking Ordinance. Agreed correction. Section two, number three, adding approximately one hundred and fifty approximately one hundred and fifty feet west of its intersection. Section three to read, it shall be unlawful for the operator of any vehicle other than a resident of the city of Blue Island to park said vehicle in front of or adjacent to any residential parking area as set forth in section two above. Adjournment at seven fifty-eight. Motion to adjourn made by Donahue, second by Cantello Zilman, Alderman Holly, Hill, Cantello Zilman voting yes, all in favor, motion carried to adjourn. Our next judiciary meeting will be December fifteenth at seven PM. But the mayor just said we're going to be having council meetings then, so I'm going to cancel I'm going to cancel that judiciary meeting for December fifteenth right now. And then I have motions on the agenda. Sorry. So the first one's a motion to correct the ordinance twenty-twenty oh-three-seven in ordinance designating residential parking upon a portion of a certain street within the city of Blue Island, Cook County, state of Illinois, and providing penalties for the violations thereof. Those were the changes.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second? All right. No questions. I'll need a roll call.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye, Zilman.
Aye.
Zilman, aye, Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye, Stevo.
Aye.
Stevo, aye, Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye, Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye, Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye, Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye, Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye, Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye, Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye, eleven ayes, Your Honor.
Okay. Second ordinance, twenty-twenty dash oh-four-four, an ordinance of the city of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, amending ordinance number twenty-fourteen dash oh-four-six relating to the regulation of parking of motor vehicles in the city of Blue Island.
So we have a motion. You, do we have a second?
Alderman Hill, second.
Thank you. If no questions, I'll need a roll call.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye, Zilman.
Aye.
Zilman, aye, Clinker. Clinker.
I'm sorry, I said aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I didn't hear you. Stevo.
Aye.
Stevo, aye, Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye, Alexander. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye, Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye, Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye, Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye, Fernwald.
Aye.
Fernwald, aye, Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye, eleven ayes, Your Honor.
And then the last, the last thing is the property damage claim twenty-twenty dash forty-six eighteen denied. Rear passenger car window struck by golf ball. Does that need to be put in?
Okay.
Yeah. A motion to deny by Alderman Rita.
Okay.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Fernwald, second.
All right. If no questions, roll call.
I have a quick question, Jim Clinker. So Alderman Rita, is there a reason why we're denying this one? We've been paying other ones.
That's why I said, actually said no in my minutes. That's why I voted against what the committee said. Basically, what the committee said is that they want to stop paying these that going forward, they don't think that they should be paying for them, that we should be paying for them because it's a liability if you're parking at the golf course or driving past this. For this particular vehicle was driving past, so.
Are we still paying?
I disagreed. I thought that we should pay this one and then going forward, not paying depending on whatever the.
Are we paying, are we still paying for homes and/or garages that get hit? I mean, we didn't pay forever and ever, and then we started paying, I don't know, four or five recently we paid, and now we're not paying again. I'm just trying to get an idea of why we're doing what we're doing.
Right. So I sent an email on behalf of the committee to Mr. Horvath, which I don't actually have in front of me. Carrie, do you want, do you remember my email? The one, the question was, why did we pay the one that was, I think, the ball went through the window and was on her couch? And then why are we denying this one? Otherwise, I can pull up the email if you want.
We paid the one claim, not four or five, one claim for a resident who lives on the golf course and who was able to find the golf ball, I believe it was on her living room couch. And I think the amount of the claim was two or three hundred dollars. With respect to the claims that have occurred concerning cars driving by, I have asked the director of the golf course to locate, if they can, whoever it was at the driving range or on the course who hit the ball that hit the car, because it's truly their responsibility. And I've informed them at this juncture that we need that information. However, I was told that the city council was not approving these, and I'm not in a position where I'm going to say yes or no. I'll leave it up to you as members of the city council whether you want to pay these claims or not. I don't have an opinion one way or the other as to whether you should continue to do so. I do have a suggestion that might result in the creation of a small fund for these types of claims, but I would prefer to make that when you're discussing the appropriations themselves.
We brought that, we actually brought that up in our meeting, and we were going, we were going to discuss that at another meeting. But we did begin that discussion. We also began the discussion of if we need to put up signs, you know, park at your own risk. I don't know. We were going to look into see what other golf courses are doing at this point. Both of those.
This is Alderman Zilman. I was on the committee. And I think it's, I worked at the golf course a few years ago, and there's several, a lot. Let's say a lot of people come in that get cracked wind chills from driving down the street. And if we pay for every single thing, it would be very expensive. So I think we do need to post signs that say, like, drive at your own risk or something of that that way, like other golf courses do. If it hits your house on the golf course, that's one thing, but driving down the street, I think, that's just my opinion.
If I could just chime in, I used to be on the committee and at the time, and I still agree that it's, I mean, it may sound a little ridiculous, but it's the person who hit the ball. It's their and we cannot be liable for these. And if we start, either we establish a fund, establishes a precedent that we're liable. I think it's a mistake, and I hate the thought of a golf ball hits a car and causes a fatal accident and what that would cost. We don't want to go there.
I agree. This is Alderman Zilman. I'm sorry. Maybe one thing, maybe we should look into some kind of netting. Maybe Teddy could look into some kind of netting. Two is, option two is, is that, I mean, think about ballgames. You go to a ballgame and it, you know, gets hit out of the park and they're not liable. So I mean, I think we're opening ourselves for a big, huge thing. We start paying for everybody's car they could hit. This is my opinion.
But you know.
This is Alderman Carr.
Go ahead, Alderman.
Which Alderman?
Carr.
Go here, Carr.
Thank you. I have been talking with Ted Ruthenberg, and he's getting quotes on netting, not only for one hundred and twenty-third Street to prevent golf balls hitting cars there, but also for some of the houses on Elm Drive, which seem to be highly susceptible to broken windows and things of that nature. So far, he's only been able to get two quotes, and we're hoping to get a couple of, a couple of other ones only because if something more serious were to happen, it would probably cost a lot less money to put up the netting than it would be to have a legal battle on our hands once again.
I talked to Ted Ruthenberg, and he said the same, that he was checking into it as well.
This is Alderman Johnson. We talked.
Go ahead, Alderman.
We talked about netting about ten years ago, because the complaints were the same, you know? And nothing has been done about it. You know, I would hate to be somebody, you know, the one driving down the street and get hit in the head with the golf ball. And with the president that we had in office that would lie fifty times in a speech, do you think someone in this day and age would honestly say, yeah, I hit the golf ball and killed a man? No, he wouldn't. So we have to put the honest on us or the golf course. By posting signs that balls will come through, letting people know to be watchful and mindful, and maybe sit down with the condo association about replacing their front windows with plexiglass instead of regular glass.
Well, I don't know, Carrie, I think, are we getting out of the scope of, I mean, is this turning into a legal discussion?
Yes. Yeah, I really think it should probably be discussed either at a committee meeting or placed on the agenda for full discussion. But at this point, I mean, the ideas are all good ideas, and we'll be happy to participate if you'd like us to in any kind of a committee meeting, if that's your desire. But at this time, it's probably beyond the scope of what is on the agenda. And so I think we should just probably leave it at that for this point in time.
So do we have a motion and second for the property damage claim?
Second to deny the property damage claim.
Okay. No question. Roll call.
Carr.
No.
Carr, no. Zilman.
This is to deny, correct?
To deny it, correct.
Aye.
Zilman, aye, Clinker.
No.
Clinker, no. Stevo.
Aye.
Stevo, aye. Johnson.
No.
Johnson, no. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
I'm gonna go no on this one. And I'd like to know more information on this. I agree with both Alderman Johnson said about netting. I remember talking about that stuff, and also you start paying, you're paying out forever. So I'm confident with this, err, on the side of benefit of doubt, I'm gonna say no.
Bellato, no. Rita. To deny.
To deny payment.
Correct.
An aye vote means you're denying it, and no vote means you're denying the motion to pay or to not pay.
What? I'm gonna vote no.
Okay.
Rita, no.
Carrie, do you want to say that again?
Yeah, if, because of the way the motion was phrased, it was a motion.
To deny.
To deny payment. So if you vote aye, you're making, you're approving the motion to deny. If you vote no, you're voting against the motion to deny. You're not voting to pay, you're just voting against the motion to deny, okay? Then someone would have to make a motion. If this motion succeeds, someone would then have to make a motion to pay the claim, whatever it might be.
Two hundred and seven dollars.
So Holly.
What do we have going on here?
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald.
No.
Fernwald, no. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Five to deny. Six to approve.
Well, how many was it? Five to deny?
Correct. Five to deny and six to pay.
And six to approve, then the motion, the motion fails. The motion needs a majority of at least eight, okay? So the motion to deny fails. So now, if someone wants to make a motion to approve the claim, they can do so. And then that needs eight to approve, okay?
All right, this is Alderman Nancy Rita. I'm going to make a motion to authorize payment for the property damage claim in the amount of two hundred and seven dollars.
So you got a motion? Do you have a second? All right. If no question, roll call, please.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Zilman.
No.
Zilman, no. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Stevo.
No.
Stevo, no. Johnson.
And this is to pay it, right?
To pay it, correct.
This is approved payment, yes.
No.
Johnson, no. Alexander.
No.
Alexander, no. Bellato.
Aye, aye.
Bellato, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Holly.
No.
Holly, no. Fernwald.
No.
Fernwald, no. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Five ayes for approval. Five ayes for approval. And six noes.
So that motion fails as well, so there's, there's.
I know, I'm on mute, sorry.
My suggestion is to probably remove, reconsider this at some point after the Thanksgiving holiday when you may have had an opportunity to have a committee discussion concerning how to address these types of claims that come, come out of the golf course. Unless you want to continue debating this matter into the Thanksgiving holiday, which I want to wish you all a Thanksgiving holiday, uh, happy Thanksgiving before you do adjourn, so.
Thank you. Anything else, Alderman?
Oh, no, um, no, that's it, that's, that's enough.
This, this, this last set of votes will go down in the annals of Blue Island City Council history as one of the more interesting ones. That's all I can say.
Uh, any Aldermanic announcements or comments?
Uh.
Alderman, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Alderman Holly, or who?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Um, the Christmas Light Parade Committee has met and due to the COVID pandemic, they just, we have decided not to do a full-fledged whole parade down Western Avenue, unfortunately, this year. We are hoping to act bigger and better than ever next year. However, we didn't really, since everyone's been so depressed with this COVID thing, we kind of thought that maybe we could do a Christmas Light Parade light. And what we're thinking of doing is having a pandemic-friendly version of the Christmas Light Parade. On Saturday, December fifth at five thirty P M. It will be limited to lighted cars only, there won't be any floats, there's no trucks, no walking units. And there can be no more than five people in the vehicle and masks are required. The parade is going to wind through the neighborhoods of Blue Island so that the residents can watch from their front porches or walk no more, most of the city will be able to walk no more than three blocks to be able to see the parade go through as the proposed route is set at this moment. I'm waiting for approval from Chief Arzad. And it will allow people to remain socially distant and safe while watching the parade. It should be fairly short. We will post a map of the route on our Christmas in Blue Island Facebook page and also on the city's website as soon as one is approved. If you are interested in decorating a car and having it in the parade, just email us at christmasinblueisland@gmail.com and we will give you more information and, and a route. So we're thinking it's probably going to be about maybe ten to twenty cars decorated with lights. And we will wind through the neighborhoods and just to give some, a little bit of a Christmas cheer going into the holiday season, which is going to be quite different this year than any that any of us have known. So, so anyways, hopefully that'll be good. We're also encouraging people to decorate their homes, maybe a little bit more than they normally could if, if you can afford it. And to participate in the Park District's home decorating contest. And we're suggesting that maybe on the twelfth of December, you pack the family into the car, drive around town and, and vote on who your favorite house is. We'll have a little bit more information, the Park District will have more information on that as well. So that's just a couple of things to try and bring a little bit of normalcy for.
Alderman Holly, as a suggestion, could there be like storefront contests also? Were there storefronts either on Western Avenue or anywhere in Blue Island if they could maybe decorate them?
Sure, that would be great, and we can talk to the Park District about including storefronts too, yes.
That'd be great, that would be great, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, this is Alderman Hill. My birthday will be on December twelfth, so that's the next food giveaway and also for decoration. So happy birthday to me.
Happy birthday, sir, happy birthday, and many, and many, many more.
Thank you as well.
Thank you, anyone else?
Alderman Nancy Rita?
Yes.
Thanks. So I just wanted to say earlier in response that I do stand by, in regards to Ravens, that I do stand by my apology, and I do believe that Mr. Thomas was treated unfairly and harshly and disproportionately to other bars in the city of Blue Island. And I, you know, we reviewed the evidence that was set forth in front of us and voted. So, and then the other thing I wanted to say is that I have Angel's Touch coming up as I've mentioned before, some of you have already donated and I truly appreciate it. If any of you could please pick up a box or two of your favorite cereal for an Angel's Touch, it's a great cause. Blue Island families helping other Blue Island families. The deadline is December sixth, four P M. If you could drop off cereal during business hours either at the city of Blue Island in the clerk's office or State Rep Bob Rita's office, twenty-three fifty-three York Street. Or if you need me to come and pick it up, I, I will arrange for my daughter to, to do that. So just contact me, but thank you very much, and I want to say happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Thank you very much, anyone else?
Yep, Jim Clinker, quick question. So two weeks ago, Mayor, I asked you to check with the finance director to see who instructed her not to interface with Alderman. Have we gotten anywhere with that?
Uh, I do have the names of the individuals and I will forward that to you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
This, this is Alderman Johnson.
Yes, sir.
I want to thank Jim Postle, because he went out and took pictures of that Keddie Bridge for years now. I didn't want to rain on Pret Winkle's parade when she was talking about helping us. But the bridge on Keddie from a hundred and thirty-ninth to a hundred and forty-third, it's, I've been asking for years to have a fence over there, because people throwing their bottles, beer bottles, liquor bottles, items all in the people's yards and could hit someone down there. But anyway, he went out and took pictures of it, note the estimated footage, the fencing needs to be and everything. And like I said, I gave it to him a couple of years ago, he has talked and, and gave the information to Superintendent John Yonan, and we haven't heard anything back yet. But I'm hoping that it will, because those people have now put fences in front of their homes, you know, to protect, you know, because the garbage blows right into their yards. And I wanted, and I wanted to thank Jim Postle, Postle for taking that extra step, you know what I'm saying, to do so. And I wanted to thank Blue Island Strong for the food giveaway, you know, it's around holidays right now and people, you know, people are not doing well, you know, because of the COVID, people are not working, things of that nature. So every little bit help, I want to thank the Leo Club at Eisenhower as well as all the volunteers, yourself, Mayor, as well as city clerk and everybody else who came now, Mr. Hills.
And you know what, Alderman, we want to thank, we want to thank you and your family for going and getting that food for us every, every month, thank you.
I appreciate it, Mayor, but we, we trying to help, you know, help our people, you know, for the little things we take for granted. It's a struggle for some people every day, and I just wanted to put that out there and I just.
And I know a lot of you have probably seen a comment in Facebook and other social medias, let's be thankful as to what we have and not what we expect, because again, it's very hard, these are very trying times, it's been a very trying year, and we're not out of it yet. So let's, let's count our blessings amongst our family.
Oh, yeah, I worked in HIV and AIDS for a very long time, and, and during that pandemic, that it took us a few years even after, afterwards to recover, so this is not instantaneous.
That's correct. If no other ones, I'll need a motion for adjournment in a second.
Alderman Hill.
Do I have a second?
Alderman Zilman.
Thank you, roll call, please.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye, Zilman.
Aye.
Zilman, aye, Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye, Stevo.
Aye.
Stevo, aye, Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye, Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye, Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye, Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye, Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye, Farrenwald.
Wear a mask and keep your distance so we can all be here next Thanksgiving, aye.
That's true.
Farrenwald, aye. Last but not least for the evening, Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye, eleven ayes, your honor.
Thank you very much, and to you, all Alderman elected officials, staff, all the residents hearing us, and everybody out in the world who's watching us on YouTube, happy Thanksgiving. Let's be humble, let's think about the less fortunate, and let's make a difference.